Good evening, and we welcome you to our meeting this evening. We welcome members of the Hodges family that are in our audience tonight. Very proud that we have you on our agenda. At this time, we have Dr. Ron Godboat, which is the pastor of Word of Truth Ministry, to lead us in our invocation. It will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. You blessed us to see. We thank you for allowing us to come together once again. We pray now that you would bless this meeting, let everything be done according to your honor and to your glory. We pray a special blessing for our nation and the challenges within our nation. We pray for our military who risk their lives daily for these liberties that we have. We give your name praise for all that you're doing, and we honor you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Morley.
Bear with me for just a minute. I've got a couple items. Under Consent Agenda, Item B, I'd like to have that removed for discussion.
Okay.
Item C, I'd like to have that removed. We need more consideration on this, a little bit more time to study this policy before we approve it. And under Old Business, Item A, I'd like to remove that from the agenda.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make them to add closed session pursuant to NCGS 143, 31811A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see us discuss one item on here. Let me find it again. Is it the item pertaining to the Youth Association Agreement with the town? Item G.
Item G, move it to discussion, which will put it under New Business also. All righty, so I've got Item B, Item D, Item G to be put under New Business for discussion. So that would make them items, B and G would become...
D and E.
Would become D and E, and the closed session would become F under New Business. And then we will be removing Item C until such time as you can get more information, and we'll be removing Item A under Old Business until you get more information. And that's correct. Is that everything you want changed? Is that everything? We're good? Anything else?
Sidewalk is being removed, isn't it?
Yes, he asked it to be removed. Sidewalk removed. The Item C, consideration of a board commissions and committee policy, that's removed. And then discussion would be B, the map of town streets, and G, the Youth Association Agreement. And then you go down to Old Business, and we remove that one, and adding a closed session. Okay?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next thing on our agenda is VFW Post 10-630, recognition of Officer William Cannon as Law Enforcement Public Service Servant Officer of the Year for 2021, and I turn it over to Mr. Morris and Mr. Blevins. Okay, come on down.
Commander.
Commander, sorry, I'm commander.
Anyways, it's with great pleasure, we recognize the hard work our first responders have done over this past year, you know, especially with the pandemic going on. And this year, we would like to recognize Field Training Officer William Cannon for his hard work and dedication to serving the town of Hope Mills and its citizens. So.
I'd like to ask our other post members.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Jim has some.
One more thing, Jim.
And the most important part of this, the most important part of this whole affair is the money for winning the prize, $100,000. So on behalf of the VFW Post 10-630, thank you for everything you do for us at our town. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do. Next, we have a special recognition and proclamation and presentation from our Historical Preservation Commission in recognition of the family of Samuel Jasper Hodges. And I'll turn it over at this time to the Chairman of our Historical Committee, Sharon Reeves.
Thank you, ma'am. We, as the HPC, decided that we wanted to really do something extra special in honor of Black History Month, and we were first looking at doing some different things with some of the traditional black graves here, cemeteries here in North Carolina Mills. And luckily, we found the Hodges family, which is a wonderful family, and it dates back to 1866 with the works of Samuel Jasper Hodges. And I put together a presentation exactly how he worked into Hope Mills history and how his descendants have spread far and wide of the United States and made great contributions over the past several generations.
You ever work around one?
No.
Press it again, maybe. Oh, gotta press it again.
Samuel Jasper Hodges was a man who not only persevered but thrived during some of the most challenging and turbulent times in our nation's history. He was born in the year 1886 in Manchester, North Carolina, and later moved to Little Rockfish Village, which later became known as Hope Mills. In 1884, he was married to Miss Fanny Buckston, and from that union produced 12 children, from whom many descendants have sprung. In 1885, he was one of the first black men hired to work at the Hope Mill and remained under their employment until 1915. Samuel was a man of many talents, which included carpentry, blacksmithing, cooking, and being the mill watchman. He was in fact so well-respected that he was appointed payroll carrier and distributor of the mill's weekly wages, which was just one indicator of the confidence management had in its honesty and integrity. It was said of him that never penny was lost or gained under his dutiful accounting and watchful eye. He was held in such high regard that the Hope Mill granted him 300 acres of land in exchange for him tending to the lumber that could be harvested from it. He would go on in the ensuing years to acquire over 900 acres of land, which made him not only one of the first black landowners, but one of the most prominent landowners in Cumberland County during this period. He would later donate parcels of land to establish Mars Hill Presbyterian Church and to erect a school for the children in the black community, which had no official educational resources at that time. In 1922, tragedy struck when his six-year-old son, Robert, drowned in the pond, which is now called Hope Mills Lake. So great was the grief that he and his wife felt that they moved from their home near the Hope Mills Cemetery and built a new homestead on the Hope Mills property, which is located off of Parkton Road. As the years passed and his children married, there were many heirs produced down through the generations that would become pioneers in their professions and prominent members of their communities. In 1975, Governor James Holthouser Jr. honored the Hodges family descendants through a gubernatorial proclamation which states, "The Hodges family has contributed immeasurably to the growth and development of North Carolina." The descendants of Samuel Hodges spread over many cities and states and have many notable accomplishments, some of which include the first black Cumberland County Agricultural Hall of Fame members, owner of a dental practice in the city of Fayetteville, civilian secretary at Fort Bragg, agronomist in North Carolina, chairman for the North Carolina Agricultural Extension Directors, female anesthesiologist in the city of Chicago, executive for a national television network in VC, a member of the first graduating class of Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship recipients, female commander of Camp Lejeune Marine Corps Base, one of the youngest Peace Corps Directors appointed, detective for the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, posthumous Silver Star recipient for gallantry in action during the Vietnam War. The Hope Mills Historic Preservation Committee wishes to recognize this notable family of Samuel J. and Fanny B. Hodges Sr., and to remember the positive contributions of the Hodges family to our history.
I'd just like to say a few words of thanks, because I had a lot, lot of help with this. I wanted to thank the kids who... Yes, ma'am? Thought we had a big mouth, sorry. I don't want to turn my back on anybody. I had a lot of help from my committee members, my fellow committee members, a lot of assistance from Pat Hall, who was the former HPC Chairman. She helped me go out to the cemeteries and collect and gather information about the family. Some of the beautiful photos of the lake were provided by Lisa Carter-Waring. And I'd also like to especially thank Andre Hodges MacLeod and his mother Dorothy, as well as Vivian Melvin Salas for providing all the information and the family photos. I also want to recognize Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Kenwanna McCray. I went to her with this idea first, and she gave me a lot of support and encouragement. And we worked in conjunction with the Prime Movers Committee for the collaboration of this project, and you'll notice the storyboards that are out along the park. And last but not least, thank you Hodges family. You are a very, very special family. I've learned that through my research. Extensive family, and certainly an inspiration to us all as citizens here in Hope Mills. And who do I talk to about being adopted? Thank you so much. I'd now like to ask Mayor Warner if she would present the proclamation to the Hodges family.
Okay. First, I'd like to tell you that in, there's a Hope Mills history book, Hope Mills Heritage, and within that book, there is a section, and there's actually more than one section, but there's one section that's predominantly about the Hodges family, and it's, this was printed in 1991. So we know that there's been more thing, more family involvement and things that have happened during the course of the past years. But I think that what I came up with from this was Sam Hodges' favorite saying, "It's better to wear out than to rust out." And he believed in hard work, he believed in encouraging that of his family, and it's evident by the members of his family that continue to work hard and to also add to not only our community, but the communities where they live now. And there's some that came here, I know, from Atlanta and other places, so just, we thank you, and we thank everything you've done for Hope Mills. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the month of February is designated as Black History Month, whereas Samuel J. Hodges Sr., born in 1866, was the first black employee of the Hope Mills Manufacturing Company and was employed from 1885 until around 1915. Whereas Samuel J. Hodges Sr. was one of the first major black landowners in Comwell County, having purchased over 600 acres in 1887 and many more in ensuing years. Whereas Samuel J. Hodges Sr.'s devoted land for the first black school in Rockfish Township and for Mars Hills Presbyterian Church. Whereas Samuel J. and Fanny B. Hodges Sr.'s lived in Rockfish Village, now Hope Mills, from around 1885 until around the mid 1920s, where all 12 of their children were born. Whereas the Hodges family was honored by North Carolina Governor James E. Holthouser Jr. by proclaiming August the 9th, 1975, Hodges Family Day in North Carolina, to remember the positive contributions that Samuel J. Sr. and Fanny B. Hodges rendered to North Carolina. Whereas Samuel J. and Fanny B. Hodges Sr.'s have thus contributed immeasurably to the history of Hope Mills and they and their family to the growth and development of their community, city, county, state, and nation. Whereas the Hodges family left a long and lasting legacy, whose members embraced numerous professions, including doctors, dentists, pharmacists, nurses, social workers, teachers, principals, college professors, architects, musicians, farmers, agronomists, military officers, and leaders, Peace Corps Directors and volunteers, journalists, media specialists, broadcast producers, researchers, business owners, et cetera. And whereas the Hodges descendants of several generations have notable accomplishments, such as the first black detective for the Comwell County Sheriff's Department, the Comwell County Clerk of Court Employee, agricultural agent in Comwell County, Comwell County Agriculture Hall of Fame members, owner of dental practice in the city of Fayetteville, civilian secretary at Fort Bragg, agronomist in North Carolina, chairman for the North Carolina Agricultural Extension Directors, female anesthesiologist in the city of Chicago, owner of a franchise for a certain food chain in New York City, journalist for a national television network, including senior broadcast producer for CBS Evening News with Dan Rather, the female Marine Captain candidate to the U.S. Army Command and General Staff College, female commander of an operations unit in the Marine Corps, female commander of Camp Lejeune Marine Corps-based Peace Corps volunteer and director to establish a new volunteer post in West Africa, a member of the first graduating class of Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship recipients, a member of Mensa Society, which constitutes the top 2% of the world population over more than 40 countries. And whereas the Hope Mills Historic Preservation Committee wishes to recognize the members of this notable family, all of whom can trace their origins back to Samuel J. and Fanny B. Hodges Sr. and to Rockfish Township in the Hope Mills, North Carolina. Therefore, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, proclaim this day, Monday, February 21st, 2022, as the Hodges Family Day in Hope Mills, to remember the positive contributions of the Hodges family to our history. And at this time, I'd like Andrew Hodges MacLeod to come forward. I'm going to present him with this special proclamation, and with him, I would ask that the remaining members of the family come and join us in front of this dais so that we can have a family picture, and I want our board to stand in honor of you and recognition of your contributions to the town of Hope Mills. (APPLAUSE). And the family members will come on up. I want everybody up. And if those of the members of the Historical Preservation Committee is here, do you want to join us? I'm probably scrunching me and stuff. You got to get everyone, everybody in here. And yes, thank you all. Way back then, back in 1886, 1887, when we got married, decided not only to raise a family, but a family that has done so many great things back in the days. This is what Samuel used to say. Okay.
I brought these two books, so you have to see what I have to look at, what historians did. Um, and we'll wait till they're out, and then we'll start again.
And yes, thank you all. Way back then, back in 1886, 1887, when we got married, decided not only to raise a family, but a family that has done so many great things back in the days. This is what Samuel used to say. Okay.
I brought these two books, so you have to see what I have to look at, what historians did. Um, and we'll wait till they're out, and then we'll start again.
And I would like to thank our Historical Preservation Committee for doing this this evening, and I think this is what it's all about, is making sure that we not only keep records of our past, but we recognize those that are still here with us from our past. I think that's where we're missing the link sometimes, is forgetting that we still need to keep those in mind that have contributed so much to Hope Mills. Now, at this time, I recognize Scott Garner, the architect, with our public safety updates, public safety building update.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm glad to be with you to give a report tonight on the new building. And tonight, the report will be in two parts. First, we'll talk about the building, and then we'll talk about the decisions that we have to make about some upgrades that we talked about last month. The building is about 60, maybe 60-plus percent complete. Last month, at the meeting, the roof insulation was just being delivered. It has now all been placed on the building. The building is dried in. Well, it will be tomorrow, they'll complete the roof on the mechanical level between the two buildings tomorrow, and it will be dried in. The glass has been put in the exterior openings, so now we have a controlled environment. And temporary heat is going to be put in. They have the heaters, they're waiting for the propane tanks to be delivered, so we can have temporary heat in the building, which will allow finished materials to go in and to be, and to be finished. And then, it'll take about a week and a half, they will start putting on the standing seam metal roof, maybe two weeks, and that will take about three to four weeks to do that, and that will complete the roof. The roof is now about 40% complete. The metal studs on the inside are about 90%, plumbing is 80%, the sprinkler is 95%, electrical maybe 40%, and mechanical about 35 to 40%. The site grading is about 90%, pavement about 60%. So we're in a good place, and we're getting, we're getting in a better place. We're starting to move, and things are going to get better, and we're going to start to move along. So we've, we've lost some time due to the COVID, but now things are going to pick up, and I think we're getting to be a better spot. The next part of what we want to talk about are the upgrades that we talked about last month, and there are a number of those, and so what we have studied those, we evaluated those, and what we've looked for are things that will increase the durability in the building, that will reduce maintenance costs, that will add to the value of the building. When we priced the building, we used the very basic materials that are standard, but I think we have an opportunity, we have some money, and I think we have an opportunity to do some upgrades, which will, in the long term, save you money in maintenance and durability, and that's very important. And so I'll go through these, and we'll talk about them, and if you have questions, we will address, address those. The first one is to change the floor materials in the fire department and in the police department. In the car dust, we would go to an epoxy-type finish, the same finish that we have in the apparatus floor. It's a high build material, it does not require waxing, you can damp mop it, you don't have to buff it, so it's much less maintenance than a VCT floor. The basic material we have specified is VCT, which is vinyl tile, which you see in a lot of buildings, but that requires maintenance, it requires waxing, stripping, and re-waxing, and that kind of thing. So this will save a lot of work. In lieu of putting that in the offices, we would put in LVT, which is, LVT is luxury vinyl tile, which has a top coat on it of 30 mil thick, it has a, it's glue-down, and it's a, has a 20-year commercial warranty on it. So it's a pretty, pretty tough material. We would use that in the offices and in the upper floors of the fire department in the residential area, and in the police department as well, although the police department has some carpet in there. We would change some of the closets to sealed concrete. To do this, the initial cost that was quoted to us by the contractor was $161,000. We did some study, we did some alterations, and we now have that for a price of $144,438. So we have achieved significant savings in that. The second option that we want to talk about would be, in the fire department, we have a mezzanine for training and storage on the far side above the turnout gear lockers, rooms, and it's open storage, it's open into the apparatus room. And we also have a balcony that you come out of the living quarters, and you walk on the balcony, and then you slide down the pole to go to the fire truck. And we have a training stair. All of those are currently sealed concrete. We think it would be a real advantage to upgrade those to an epoxy finish for the same reasons I said before, because of the durability and the decrease in maintenance. Sealed concrete will eventually walk off, the seal will walk off, it'll get dirty, and it's hard to clean. So it would be a savings in the long run in terms of maintenance to do that. The cost for that is $23,128. In reviewing, the next option, in reviewing the plans with the interim police chief and the police chief, they have asked for some additional marker boards to post information throughout the police department, and the cost for that is $3,582. Another thing that we would like to add or think should be added is to, in the snack room, in the snack room, we have a sink and a, we don't have a microwave, but we'll have a tabletop microwave, we have a refrigerator and sink in there, and we would like to add an ice maker in there. And so that would be an ice maker, requires a water supply, a drain, and an electrical connection, and the price for that is $3,000. supply, a drain, and an electrical connection. And the price for that is three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The next change is something that I think that I personally think would improve the looks of the building. On the on the exterior of the building, we will have brick veneer, and we will have metal panels. And we have a few louvers that penetrate the metal panels. And I would like to see if we could have those custom color for those louvers so they match the metal panels. We would have specified that, but we didn't know the color of the panels when we we had not selected the color of the metal panels, and we didn't know what to specify. But this is an add, and I think it will enhance the look of the building. The price for that is three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. And there's one more, one more add. We have looked at the the selection of exercise equipment has been made. We need to add some receptacles to accommodate that. This this equipment was not selected before we finished the drawings, so it was recently selected. We need to add receptacles in there. We need to relocate the TV and AV receptacle in the chief's office. And we need to add one more access control for at the request of the police department. And what that will do is that will give them greater control so that they don't have to post a man to guard a door when they bring people in. The cost for that is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Now, to partially offset that, we do have some items that we'll we'll achieve savings on. We have specified an allowance for purchase of residential equipment, stove, refrigerators. They have them in the police department and in the fire department. And so, we will we have we have in the contract an amount for that. But I think we could take that back. The town will have to purchase the appliances, and there will be some savings. But the allowance we have is twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. We would take that back from the contractor, and that would be a credit to you. The town will buy the appliances. The appliances that have been selected to date cost about fourteen thousand dollars. You'll have to pay for those, but but there is some savings from that allowance. You'd get the savings from the allowance either way. We also, in the last change order, if you remember, we added a lift station for the modular building. So, in looking at that, we have elected to install the water line, the sewage line, and the electric line serving that building, but to not install the lift station at this time. And and for doing that, for not doing that, we get a credit of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. That's the same amount that he put in his his estimate to install it. So, he's playing fair with us. Then, overall, if we take all of those items, we would do it would change order six would be an add of one hundred forty thousand, seven hundred dollars. I've talked over this with staff. Staff would concurs that they would recommend that these are good changes. They will save on maintenance costs, they will add to durability, they will add to the value of the building. All of these are requested by by the owner. They are not contractor generated. We are not required to do any of them. But we need to make a decision about it so we can move forward and get the materials sorted if we choose to go that way. I know I gave a lot of different things there, and you may have some questions. And I'll be glad to go back through any one of them or all of them and and answer your questions.
Mayor.
Uh huh.
Excuse me. In the future, I I kind of like to see something before the meeting because you threw one, two, three, four, five, six different things at us with a dollar amount, a hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred dollars. I mean, I understand you're telling us, and I and I trust that, but I'd like to see it before the meeting, before we get in here, because you're asking us to make a split decision just like that on a hundred and forty thousand dollar change order for this building. And I have nothing on paper to show me any figures, any numbers. I know you told me that we could save here and and here, but, you know, I'd like to see something in the future from finance or before we even make a decision. I mean, I'm I'm up here steadily writing numbers and trying to trying to keep up with you, but I I'd like to see it. I I it's hard for me to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars at the drop of a hat.
It's not tangible.
Without seeing it. I mean, we get a packet. We get a agenda packet. And the only thing we got in our agenda packet for for that is that, that it don't show us the change orders. I'd like to see a change order. Anytime a change order comes from here on out, I'd like to see it broke down. And, you know, what it's going to cost us, what we can save off of cutting somewhere else, if we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul, whatever we're doing. I don't know if that's the correct thing to say, but it's hard for me to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I just can't say.
So, for clarification, Mr. Garner, you took us, he talked about these last item. He's just bringing you these items before we bring you the official change order at the next meeting. So, the main thing here is the epoxy floors, which is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Still not moving.
And this isn't for approval. We will bring that change order at the next officially we bring the change order.
We'll bring the change order back. But we need to make a decision, though, of are we going to do this or not? And and let me say, I understand where you're coming from. But I would say to you, we we have gone back and forth and negotiated with this contractor. I've got a stack of emails of where we went through talking about let's change this, it's a better a better value, save money, or whatever. I got the last prices today at noon on one or two of these items. Some of them I've had for several weeks. But I can appreciate that that you would like to see something in writing and be able to think about it ahead of time. I I fully get that.
I mean, and I can understand where some of these changes are needed. And and I think some of them are good changes. And I'm I'm not against any part of this project. But I when we're being steward of the citizens' money and the tax dollars and everything like that, I'd just like to see it on paper. And I know the manager said he's going to get that for us. But he said he's going to get that for us before the next meeting. But but you're wanting us to make a decision tonight on if we're going to do it or not. And it's it's kind of hard. It's just kind of hard.
If we can make a decision, we need to, because, I mean, things happen, and then it's just, you know, but it it takes time to get all of that information together. I mean, we have we have been working on it. We have been discussing it with the staff over the last month and trying to get it to the best value that we can.
Well, can we can we get the can we get the finance director up here to maybe run some numbers for us? Let us know if we're going to be good. I mean, I know we got a contingency, but I I mean.
Yeah, all this can be covered by the contingency. But I see what you're saying. In the future, what we can do is instead of the cutoff being the day of the meeting, the cutoff for getting change order information can be the agenda packet time.
Yeah, that would have gave us a couple of days to look.
But like Scott said, some of these numbers, we were waiting for the contractor. We didn't get them until today, trying to put this together so we, you know, have just one change order that has all this. But I definitely see what you're saying. That makes a lot of sense, and I would probably want to.
I would appreciate it.
I would too.
But a lot of this stuff here is, you know, they're waiting for a decision from the council so they can keep moving forward. But definitely before the next meeting, we can say if there's going to be a change order, I have to have it for the council prior.
So, I guess so, I guess the contingency fund that we have for this project, this it'll cover this.
Yes.
What are we looking at after that? And what's, I mean, where are we at after after the hundred and forty thousand?
How much contingency is left?
Yeah, how much or where are we at on that?
We have.
Let me say, let me say this. I've done this for a long time. You never know what you're going to face in change orders. I would say that the change orders that we have had on this building are very, very high percentage, ninety-five percent of them, or maybe even higher than that, have been things that the owner requested. So, they are additions to the building at the request of the owner. And and that's a good thing. But we're in construction, and we don't know what we're going to hit between there and the end. I think that we are pretty far along, and that we we should not hit major items. Well, we may hit some small items, but I don't think we will hit any major items because basically the building is up. The building is up, and the building is dried in. Now, we may hit a few small things, but we've we've covered the utilities, and we've covered the the structure of the building. So, I think we're in pretty good shape. But until the final day, there's always a possibility that you'll hit some little something that will trigger a change. Does that make?
I understand. I understand what you're saying. And and I would agree with you that we haven't had very many change orders in this project. But I I guess we're at a situation now where we got to make a decision. But I would prefer that that we could, you know, if we could get something a little bit earlier and.
First, since Mr. Garner has the list right now, we can provide that to you so you have to.
Um, excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
To look at something that quick in this short notice, I'm I'm a visual guy. And as you was going down, you did ask answer one question, what additional cost it's going to be, and how would it impact on the funding that we have set aside already. However, if some of these projects required or desired, that's number one.
These are desired.
They are desired projects. See, and I have a problem with desired projects.
I don't think that.
Let me finish, sir.
Maybe one of them is required.
Let me finish, sir. All right. Now, going down the list of required desire, we should also prioritize them. All right, if we decide to move forward with one, which one do we prioritize? Which one do we decide to go with first? I I think it'll make it easier for us. And also, the advantages and disadvantages, if we go this route, you list some. You said that in the long term, it will reduce maintenance costs. And maintenance is always a cost savings. However, it's like Commissioner Marley just said, if we can be good stewards of the people's money, we'll have to make sure that we are being good stewards.
That's what we've done with each one of these items, exactly what you're saying. The floor changes from the epoxy to the LVT and different things, what was going to be in the building was going to require more maintenance. It would have required waxing and that sort of thing. Fire Department didn't want to do that. It would be very costly. And it would, you know, the maintenance on it, what we're getting is something that's low maintenance, that's actually going to last longer. So, the cost is here now, but it's going to save us in the future. Everything you're talking about, and each one of these is already prioritized. They're all a priority, otherwise they wouldn't be here. There are other things that have come up that never even get to you because we've decided we're not going to do that, or that option is not viable. So, that by the time you get it, it's already been vetted. We've already discussed everything that you just mentioned before it even comes to. We want to bring something to you, even though it's a desire, we're not going to bring it to you unless it's the best thing for that building.
Commissioner Skrol.
Now, okay, like, can can I see that paper? Because I, like everyone else is saying, I need a visual.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm good, but I'm not that good.
I'll go make a copy of it right now.
And and why, Commissioner, you finish?
I also have one more comment. So, like, you're saying with the epoxy floors, just as an example, they they last longer, they're they're better. So, with the current floors that you were trying to change to epoxy, where are they currently?
We have, well, we have different floors. But the main floor thing we're doing is putting epoxy in the corridors and in the heavy traffic areas in the building.
Okay.
That require maintenance and get more wear and tear. The epoxy floor is the same floor that we would have in the apparatus floor. It's a high build material, no waxing.
So, what my question is, is with the current floor that's currently in there, how long is it expected to last?
Yes.
Well, it it'll last, it'll last a while, but it's a high maintenance. It's a standard. It's probably, I would say, it's a standard building material. It's very economical to put in, but you have ongoing costs, more ongoing costs.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I guess what Commissioner Skrol is saying, when I do a cost savings, when I I've been responsible for a couple of large corporate projects myself. But I put the advantages and disadvantages, number one. And then I looked at, I put the cost savings in a chart. Ten years from now, you got to replace the floor. This is what it's going to cost. Maintenance, wax, and I add all that up versus putting it in place now. And see, when we see that, now we can make a smart decision. And it's much easier that way. And you said something else that I think we need more information on. You said that we are fifty percent complete on this, thirty percent complete on that, and that. If we can get something that lists and identify that would help us a great deal too in the process, in the future.
I can tell you which is higher maintenance, and I can't tell you the specific cost. I mean, the contractor has to generate that.
Yeah, I understand.
I can give you the pros and cons of each material, advantages, and relative installation cost. But I deal with that in a second anyway, rather than the first one.
No, I understand. Because I I list, I used to do manpower study surveys. And I had the list of manpower, how long it takes to fix the nut boat, you know, and I had to list, break it down in that manner for me to come up with the cost savings in order for me to determine whether or not we're going to stay army, or we're going to go contract. And basically, that's what we're doing now, I guess, is just really trying to come with come up with the strategy of the most effective way forward that's going to save us money in the long run. That's the bottom line. Would you agree?
Well, I think I think all of these will save money long term, or we would not have bothered to do. But they are, I mean, we're talking about a lot of that. But this is an investment. And so, we're trying to make it the best investment that we can.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I I guess we're at a point like, like you're saying, we we need to try to make a decision. I'll I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve these changes. And just ask that in the future, we get this kind of information ahead of time.
And I will I will endeavor to do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
And the fire department's not here, but this is, the fire floors and the floors in the fireside are epoxy is a lot higher.
I will say, I will say that I'm familiar with the flooring, and it is a better, it is a better option to go with with the amount of traffic. I mean, I am familiar with that. So, I I can agree with it. But like I said, I'll make that motion to go ahead and approve these changes. And like I said, just ask for that in the future.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Because Commissioner Marley is our subject matter expert, and he works with the fire department, and he has knowledge in those areas. So, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And we I will I will make sure that happens. I would say we're still on schedule, and we're still in budget, even with this change. So, we're still, we will look very carefully at all changes before we bring them to you. We recognize them. That's part of my job.
Thank you.
We're glad to do. And thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda that is made up of item A, item D, E, and F, with the others being removed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. All righty. Under old business, we have none. Oh, I'm sorry. I always, do we have any public comments? All righty, I didn't have a sheet in front of me. I did, I, and I'll tell you something else, I skipped over official comments, so this, that's, I'm still used to. I just keep, that, for whatever reason, I just do it. Um, all right, we'll start with Commissioner Marley. Do you have any official comments? I'm out of order, but we've got to catch it up because now's the time.
No, ma'am, I don't have anything at this time.
Commissioner Skrol?
No.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, I do, Madam Mayor, but I'll be brief. I would like to just remind everyone that the um, the Trades Academy with wood framing class at Southview will begin on Monday. They are still looking for students to participate in that class, and the next class will be an electrical class, and be on the lookout for a summer escapes program through Southview Middle School for um, trades with middle school kids. And this is the first time the FTCC will be offering that. And I would like to thank the Historic Committee tonight for doing the presentation for Mr. Jasper's family. I knew, I miss the Hodges family. Um, I knew some of his descendants and didn't really know, but I knew some of his descendants. And there is a story walk of of different people in our community that they have out on the the track. So if you get a chance, if you would go around and look at that, and that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Mitchell?
Uh, nothing, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Legg?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank the Historical Provision for all the work that you've got involved yourself into lately, and for honoring the Hodges family. I think it was a great honor for them, and I personally appreciate all of that. A quick update for you and my brother. I told some of you I'd keep you updated, and some of you I haven't, sometimes I haven't. He's doing quite well now. He's not over the hill, but he's approaching the the top. They have moved him out of his ICU unit and into uh, inside therapy. Where he has therapy three times a day. I had to do it two times, and I thought that was torture. So I know what he's going through. But I still would like to request your continued prayers for his his health to come back. That's the way it was meant to be from his time of birth. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll just say again, tonight's been a great night for us to recognize a family that has, was very important to the town of Hope Mills, and and even more so when you, when I started looking at other documents that had information, and former Mayor Dees did a good job recovering uh, the information that he had found. And it, again, it covers a lot of the special sayings, and that one saying was something that I thought was very nice, especially with the family, their legacy that they have. All righty, so we've taken care of that. We've passed consent, passed new, old business, new business. Consideration and acceptance of petition for annexation of Camden Commons and Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two dash O two, directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the annexation petition, and this will be annexation number A Twenty Twenty Two, and it's a contiguous annexation. Do you have any questions in reference to that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the annexation of Camden Commons Resolution Number R Twenty Twenty Two dash zero two.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next we have consideration acceptance for the petition for annexation of Camden Preserve and Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two dash O three, and directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the annexation petition. This will be annexation number A Twenty Twenty Two O two, and it is a contiguous annexation. Any questions in reference to that one?
Mayor, motion to approve R Twenty Twenty Two dash O three, and have the clerk investigate the annexation petition.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda was requested at, by Commissioner Skrol, a discussion of retirement of historian Pat Hall. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner uh, Skrol.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so last week, rather, last VOC meeting, we had the uh, the letter that you put on everyone's desk for the recommendation to award Pat Hall the position of histori- historian emeritus. And from my understanding, emeritus is a word to personnel that are retiring from the position. I had spoke with Pat Hall, and she was under the understanding that she, she had no idea that she was being retired from the position. And so I'd just like to get some clarification on that.
Okay. The position was an appointed position by the mayor. Uh, prior to that, Mayor Dees was appointed, by all records that I can find, he was self-appointed because he had written a book about history. When Mayor Dees passed away, at that time, Pat Hall was the chairman of our Historical Preservation Committee, and had been very active. And the consideration was, I guess, to fill the position. There is no policy, there is no requirements, there's nothing written, and the assumption was, in my thoughts, when I appointed the position, would be that it would be a position that we would end up with some type of documentation carrying forward. This goes to nineteen ninety-one, and it's a very good document, but it stops at ninety-one. So what's happened from ninety-one till current time, and that's where we're missing so much. And we've got people that are very, very knowledgeable about our town that have passed away, and we've lost that history. And I asked questions, you know, we need that documentation. Where are the pictorial documentation of things that have occurred in our town that we could put together and do something very similar to say to what Parkton does? This is Parkton's historian, and it's a pictorial history. And so there's a product that's produced, and oftentimes the person that does it gets the gets the credit for putting it together. But the idea is to move forward with our history. And what I was finding was that that wasn't happening, but the other thing that I found was that when I called Mrs. Hall, and this has not been within the last year, but I did call Mrs. Hall, and I asked her if I could appoint someone else to the position. And I was told that her position was for life, that she had the position until she passed away. And when I, of course, I said, well, I don't understand that because I can't find that policy or anything written anywhere. And with some future, I mean, with some research, I found that with the previous members of that committee who served and actually got to the point that, for whatever reason, they weren't attending meetings, and I'll use Mayor Bradford and his wife Edith. We did do the emeritus status for both of them, and allowed them to attend meetings, be a part of the committee, but they were non-voting. And the idea was that didn't mess with the quorum of that committee, and they could always be very active. The other person that we did this to was by request, and that was for Jim and Jean Clark. And that was when, again, in fact, Jean was still attending, but we made her a member in good standing for the remainder of her life. This was not to retire Pat Hall. This was to give us an opportunity to get someone in the position that was, had the time, and that was also either a member of our historical committee, which she no longer is. She actually did not renew, or she resigned the committee, and has not been an active member in any of the events that we have here at town. The, and because there's not anywhere in any documentation, anything, in any kind of policy that states we have a town historian. So at that point, it's why I believe the commissioners tonight chose to pull the item about the committees and commissions. Because I believe within that, we can come up with what are the duties of that position, and if there is a a need for that position, what is the requirement of it, and also the length of time. We don't have any position in our town that is lifelong. There's not a position like that. If you're on a committee, it's for two years. Now, you may serve on a committee for many, many, many years, which some people have done, but as far as it being a position, it is renewable. And that's what I think was the thought with that committee, is that we needed, or for that position, that we needed someone that could be very active and start producing some documents and keeping records of our history. So that was my thought. Wasn't meant to retire her, it was to honor her. Did not want, and I was hoping that she would stay because it was in no way trying to dishonor her. What I was trying to do was actually honor her because of the fact that she has not been an active participant. Give her the credit for, where credit's due, and we've had, you know, Commissioner Legg was concerned about people resigning from committees or not being on committees, and I thought, well, then let's let her be a member of that committee and could be on call for that committee or be in their meetings. She's just a non-voting member, so that was my intent. And I didn't mean to do anything to cause any kind of problem, and really truly thought it was, I was trying to bestow an honor.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I did a lot of research, and thank Dr. Commissioner Mary Cray. She submitted some questions to our town clerk, and she too came back and saying there was no policies and procedures. And you always see me say this all the time, we gotta follow the processes, we gotta have procedures in place. That is what keep us in line. That is the integrity of the processes. It's when we have something, we have gauges, something to keep us aligned, keep us in line, so that we can make sound and good decisions. What I'd like for us to do is to go back and we come up, get with the Preservation Committee, Historical Preservation Committee, and draft up a policy for appointing a historian, a town historian, as well as the procedures for a committee of that nature, so that we can begin to do it the right way and the correct way, and with the term limit as well. Matter of fact, I had a discussion early with one of the commissioners, saying, you know what? There's a possibility we could have two commissioners, because Pat Hall has a lot of history. Pat Hall can actually begin to mentor someone in that position so that we can move forward in a much more smarter and healthier process. Uh, I don't know how you all feel about it, but I I would like for that to be something that we take in consideration.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with everything that Commissioner Mitchell said. I don't believe in anybody being appointed to anything for life. Again, I think there needs to be some parameters about, around historians. Think we do need to bring history forward, and I think what you all did tonight, where you took something that was in a book, and you brought it forward. You told us about different things from the the history that Mr. Hodges' family had contributed, and you brought it forward, and you took something out of a book, and you brought it to life, and you brought people here from out of state throughout the county
Yes.
to see that. I think we need to do more parts, do more things like that about history. In Hope Mills, we got a story to tell. I think we need to tell it, but I think we're always getting into debates, the parish house. Um, now it's the historian, the museum, and I think as long as we keep doing that, we won't move forward. But if we keep doing things like you did tonight and be able to bring history forward, I think you'd be able to tell the story of Hope Mills in a beautiful way, bringing ways to bridge us together instead of divide us.
Yes, I agree.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If it's in order, I'd I'd just like to make a motion that we rescind that vote that we took the last meeting until such time as we can gather all the information that you discussed a few moments ago.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Just clarify on the motion. I don't recall who voted which way, whether it was unanimous or.
Unanimous, yeah.
I thought we were honoring her. I didn't know what that word was. I don't mean to sound stupid and dumb, but I guess I am. I just know what that word was, and I still don't know.
I second you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, before we rescind that, I mean, I I really think that we should talk with Pat Hall and see how she feels about it first. We can always revisit this, because I really think that is an honor to recognize her for the contribution she made to this town. I think emeritus status will be something to honor her with. The question is, is she willing, and if she's ready to accept emeritus status? And I'd like to table this until we have a discussion with her. The Preservation Committee can talk with her and find out how she feel about it, or Commissioner Marley's on the committee, she can come back to the next meeting, and then we can go from there if that's okay with you all.
And I think also give an opportunity to come up with the requirements, because it may be, if we'd come up with the requirements, this may determine what her thoughts are on this.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That's one of the reasons why I had that item pulled from the consent agenda for the committee policy, so we could revisit it and make the needed corrections, because there's no, through the email thread, there's no record of any procedure or policy for that position. Uh, yeah, because it's it's not a committee, but we can add a section in that policy that covers that position. But that's one of the reasons why I had it pulled, so we could discuss it further and and make the right decisions. So, I mean, I I can't support rescinding what we did at the last meeting tonight. That's why I asked for that item to be pulled for a further discussion by the board, to make sure we get it right moving forward.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and that motion, unless Commissioner Legg will not have the the motion, we need to vote on that motion that's on the floor, and that motion would be to rescind the motion that was made at the previous meeting. Which, if you do that, then what that's gonna mean is, are we accepting the fact that she thinks it's a lifelong position? Or if we wait and do the requirements for that position, which there's no recorded requirements. If you do the requirements, we can get those, we can get some some ideas from these other areas that have historians, and then, and then make the decision whether or not she wants to actually take that responsibility.
Yes.
Does that make sense? What's your thoughts?
Well, my thought was to to give us time to to check this other stuff out that you spoke of, to to make sure we're making the right decision. Miss Hall has done a lot for this town, and I I wouldn't do anything to dishonor her, and I thought I did after I found out some of the stuff I found out I voted for. I didn't mean to vote that way, uh, to dishonor someone. So I'll withdraw my motion to rescind that vote, to give us time to get the committee together, to go over some stuff, and maybe make contact with Miss Hall, talk with her. Can you do that, Ms. Reeves?
I I'll be glad to speak with Mrs. Hall about your request, sir.
And would you be willing to also help us just develop what the position is? Because we do not have anything recorded anywhere, and I want to thank Ms. Starling, because she did do as far back as she could take it, and the only time she found anything was when Mayor Dees announced that he was a town historian. And at that time, my understanding is it was due to him having done this book, and he had recorded town's history, and that was one of the first ones. And he gave credit to Mr. Brower for giving him pictures and stuff to help him in doing this book. So, but other than that, there has not been an actual assignment of that position.
Mayor, I'd just like to say, um, I thank Jerry for pulling that, pulling this motion, because we we got a chance to do it right.
Get it right.
And move from this point forward and and make sure that we're right moving forward, so we don't have.
Is that all right with the board? Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Legg.
Thank you.
All righty. Now, the next thing was we moved item, um, item B from consent agenda, and that will be our next item. And that would be consideration approval of addition of a map of town streets to ordinance S Twenty Twenty One dash twelve. And the original ordinance was approved November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and I'll, I guess.
I think, um, I I pulled that for discussion. I'll, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mitchell. I, when I talked, uh, when I talked to him earlier today, the map was kind of hard to read that was in the packet, and I think he was just wanting some clarification on the map, but I'll I'll let him.
Yeah.
Turn it over to him.
Yes, the reason why I asked for that, um, because when I looked at the map, I'm gonna be honest with you, other than looking. Other than looking at the small lodges, and I got old eyes now, so it's not easy to see this thing. And being a former truck driver, now is there gonna be another overlay that comes out with this that's gonna make it simpler for a truck driver to know what routes he or she can use when they coming into the town or approaching Hope Mills? Uh, can there be a simplification to put in the process so that we, as elected officials, when we look at it, we understand it a little bit better?
Quite can clarify, um, the previous ordinance had a list of streets that Mr. Cisco put together. That was technically, the town does not have any designated truck routes. All the designated truck routes type DOT transportation thoroughfares, um, three oh one, Oak Grove. So when we redid the ordinance, it asked for a map designating ownership of truck routes.
Uh-huh.
And so the DOT routes within the town limits are the blue ones. And this is our Powellville map. So this isn't a map we created. This is a, this is a designation of ownership of streets within the town limits. So the, the routes in the maps don't cover county jurisdiction or state. They just show within the town limits what the colors are, are roadways. So the only one that's not correct on here would be Main Street because as Mayor referred to, uh, they worked with DOT to take that off of the truck route designation. But all of the blue routes are DOT maintained and thoroughfares within our jurisdiction. So it doesn't, the intent isn't to have a truck driver, someone on the web look at this and say, oh, this is where I can go with my rig and this and that. This is just designating with our ordinance for enforcement action or any kind of signage or things limiting the truck ordinance. It tells you, um, you know, you know, basically any neighborhood, any street in the town, if you're doing, there's exemptions. So if you're delivering or picking up or going to places with school buses, those things are still gonna be on town streets.
Uh-huh.
But this is for the DOT right of ways. It designates where our ordinance actually takes it. So where that comes in, like, I don't know if you know this, but, um, on the intersection of Legion and Lakeview Road, there's now a new sign.
Uh-huh.
Trying to keep traffic from going down that route because it's not advantageous. Most truckers that go that way are only gonna do that once. And then they learn that's not a good way to access it. But it's basically giving our jurisdiction and our entities the knowledge to enforce the ordinance. It's not intended to be like, oh, I'm a truck driver and I'm going to Hope Mills, where do I drive? This is an enforcement action tied to our, our regulation and the ordinance.
And I'll, I'll just chime in, but part, part of the concept of using a map instead of a list of roads was actually, the thought was it would be easier to read that it, you know, instead of a list of a bunch of roads and distances and intersections that just looking at a map would be easier to read where you can, can't go. And, you know, that was the concept originally behind the map instead of written out. Because if you had it written out, you'd have, you know, this road from this intersection to that intersection, it would get a little bit unwieldy. Uh, whereas the thought process behind using a map was it'd be easier to sort of look at and say, okay, here's where you can, can't go. Now, of course, as Scott said, you know, this is sort of in conjunction with the ordinance, how this works. Now that these roads are designated, if the council approves this map, these roads are designated as non-truck routes, which means you could then put up signage if necessary to alert truck, truck drivers not to go to particular neighborhoods if, if you so choose.
And I think that's the explanation they probably needed attached to this. Because I think when they were looking at it, what they were looking for were the streets that were being closed. And so what was happening was you didn't know. But so what's actually happening is the, the, all the streets that are town streets, we have the authority to say no trucks.
Hmm, now, I know the, the previous board requested this. Now, the previous board sitting up, Jerry, Commissioner McCray, and Brian, and you said, y'all satisfied with the map? Y'all good with it? If y'all, if y'all okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and I, I think.
This is y'all project.
I think the only street that, um, we had the concern about also was Johnson Street and Trade because they used that as also, uh, cut-throughs, especially if Main Street's crowded. And now, and I've seen the signs on Lakeview. Lakeview was the one that was causing, uh, so much issues because when they came down Lakeview, they couldn't make the turn on Main Street. So you'd have this big truck stuck in the middle of the road. Um, so that takes, that benefits that. But the Johnson Street, Trade Street might be another one we need to look at because that's, that's where, again, if they're trying to avoid the traffic. And also if they're too high, they tried to avoid the train trestle, which that's what one sixty-two could do for them. All the Walmart trucks could go on one sixty-two and come in from the other side if they knew it. And that's why I think we need to make sure these, um, companies know that there's another way to get in now rather than just coming down, um, our Main Street. Which is, again, uh, the main thing was they were taking off-roads.
So, so the next step would be, um, obviously the Powellville map gets updated and we don't necessarily do that. And then we can bring it back if there's new roads. But the other step is we would send it to DOT, like, like with your other communications. I'm not sure what their process is, how that goes to complete maps and all of that. But we would send it to their forwarding contact so that they incorporate our designated routes. And hopefully that would transcend to the modern GPS navigation.
Yeah.
Madam, Madam, I want another question.
Okay.
You, you said something that triggered something. I've seen trucks come down Main Street and get two, done the pass and actually had to back up. Now, do we have a sign posted down somewhere identifying the, the height of our, um, other, is there one down there?
Yeah.
I know, paid attention to it.
There's one there, but we still have some that go.
That's true, I don't even care, you know?
It's always fun when a truck actually gets stuck under there.
Yeah, true.
New cars have been caught up there before. So do we have a motion now to approve this?
Mayor, what, what, what do we need to, what's the motion that needs to be made on this since we took it off consent?
The, the idea behind this map is that you've already adopted the ordinance. And the ordinance says basically that you can't drive on the road designated by the map.
So we need to approve the map.
So you approve this map and that gives effect to the ordinance that you adopted previously. And the idea behind this map is, you know, if you decide that we can take this road off or have this road, you can do that just by bringing a new map to the board rather than redoing the entire ordinance.
So I just need to make a motion to.
Motion to approve the map.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion that we approve the map that is, uh, presented to us tonight.
Have a motion, have a second.
My second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is behind tab nine. And this is, uh, coming from our consent agenda and that's consideration of authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement between the Hope Mills Parks and Rec Department and the Hope Mills Youth Association. And this was, uh, asked to be put, taken off the agenda by Commissioner Legg.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, I spoke with Lamarcos about this. Um, I think what they're trying to do is update some stuff that has expired. But I serve as the president of the Hope Mills Youth Association and I'd like to excuse myself from any voting on this although I can, if it's permissible, I can sit here and debate, but until I take this to my board, I'd appreciate if we don't vote on it.
Okay.
Um, can I just clarify, is, is your refusal motion based on a direct financial benefit that you get from this?
Not to me, but it went to a group that I'm the president of and.
I think unless you're getting, you are, if you remember, getting a direct financial benefit from your vote, then I, I don't think you can properly recuse yourself from the vote.
Okay, I'm here to stay, man.
Okay.
Y'all asked for it.
I guess the question would be, and, and maybe that would be, answer your question, but are there any changes in this agreement from the previous agreement other than extending this agreement for the two years?
Yes, because the old agreement has some dated information.
Okay.
One in particular that Commissioner Legg and I talked about is the fact when the agreement was first written, it covered all sports. And so here of late, it's morphed into where the youth association essentially does boosters, fundraisers, et cetera, for, um, youth baseball and, um, youth, um, female softball. And so we changed that language. And then we also changed the language as far as they do a picture, um, um, fundraiser where the, the money from taking the photos at the end of the season benefits the youth association. They get the proceeds from that. And then another change was, um, building access. Um, the previous agreement had it where the youth association had, um, um, first rights to all the rooms, including the rooms upstairs. And since then, Maxie Dove and staff have moved into the offices. And so that's something that we also changed. So those are the main three changes that, that we made to the agreement.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute a sponsorship agreement between the town of Hope Mills and the Hope Mills Youth Association.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
My second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion?
Yes, that's the question. I'm trying to figure out, Commissioner Legg, he has concern that your board have not had a chance to review it. That's your concern?
They have not seen this yet. I didn't see it until.
My, here's my question, uh, Lamarcos. Would it have, does it have any negative impact with this board by us doing this? Or is it a positive thing for them?
It, it would not, um, like I explained to, um, Commissioner Legg, couple of ways we can do it. We can, we can vote on it at the, at, you know, the meeting in March. Or we can authorize the town manager to sign the agreement knowing that, that, that the dollar amount's not gonna change. That the amount that we reimburse, um, the youth association, that's just a set amount. I think it was two thousand dollars. So, I mean, you all can authorize the town manager to negotiate and sign the agreement or we can bring it back next time. It's, it's real.
Just to clarify, what you're authorizing tonight or what motion to authorize is to authorize the town manager to, to execute the agreement? That would still give the youth association time to review and approve it.
Tweak it.
Um, it's just that your, your authorization, Scott, to enter that contract upon agreement by the youth association.
And you can still discuss.
So there'd still be time for, for the youth association to review.
Well, I'm, I personally agree that it's about time we got a new agreement.
Okay.
It's been seven years. Yeah, it's been, we, we've been operating on, without one for seven years.
It's been like two thousand fourteen, we've worked without an agreement.
So you're okay.
Uh, but I think that's a, a very good thing to do. It'd give me time to, I've got a meeting the first with them and I can present that to them. But thank you very much.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I just had one, uh, statement about it. Um, this is just about the verbiage on it for, under the, um, under the section one of general conditions, uh, for the Hope Mills Park and Recs and the association. Um, Article eleven, the verbiage is a little iffy, um, talking about service animals.
Which one?
Article eleven, it says, no pets are permitted at ballpark facilities other than service animals with official documentation. ADA doesn't require official documentation for service animals. So that might be something you just want to change the verbiage on.
Okay.
So, just, just run out.
That, that's a sticky subject.
And that's why.
And we've experienced that.
Yeah, because you ask someone to show proof and they'll get mad, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you gotta look at people sometime and you'll know.
Uh, yeah, but we can only, we can't assume, you know?
And I appreciate you bringing that out, Commissioner.
So, you okay for my phone?
Uh, I, I'm fine with everything we just did.
All right, good.
Yeah, then what you're authorizing is just for him to negotiate, but so those, those tweaks can still be made.
Right.
And I think that would take something taken off with Mr. Robinson.
Okay, so I have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
I'd like to.
Okay, so we have.
Four more votes.
Okay, we have four, two, one.
He didn't vote against it.
A non-vote counts as a vote.
Non-votes are yes votes.
Counts a positive vote, so it's five and oh.
Good, my personal gain.
It's five and oh. All righty.
I agree with that.
All right, so we're now down to, um, we have a closed session, which I need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consult a closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-six to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion, have a second.
My second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll go directly to the front, uh, conference room and we will be back as quick as possible. This time I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to seal the minutes of the closed session until such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session and further no action is taken.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Uh, on our reports and information items, we do have the manager's report. Is there any questions or anything you'd like to update to that report? Um, Mr. Mazeros. Okay. Okay, so just, does anybody have any questions in reference to, um, tab fourteen? No questions? All righty. Uh, the reminders you have before you, uh, the next thing that we have will be, um, we have our regular meeting and then we do have our budget retreat coming up. And with that, is there anything else? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, second? Second, good evening. See y'all, thank you for, thank you for everything.